Thank you, Mr. Roser.
All right, Mr. President, would you like me to do the intake roll?
Please, sir.
All right, I'll start with the Board of Trustees, Jason Burdine.
Here.
Allison Drew.
Here.
Hattie Heliger.
She's having a problem getting in.
Still working, we'll come back.
Yes, sir.
I'm Grail James.
This is Grail, I'm here.
Jim Rice.
Here.
Dave Rosenthal.
You're muted, Dave. Here.
Here we go, and Kristin Tosam.
Here.
All right, we'll come back and check on Ms. Heliger in just a second. We have staff, Deanna Saavedra.
I'm here, Dr. Dupree.
Brian Gwynn.
Good evening, I'm here.
Anthony Delicato.
Yes, sir, I'm here in present.
Beth Martinez.
I'm here, good to see everyone.
Oscar Perez.
I'm here, sir.
Long Farm.
I'm here, Dr. Dupree.
David Ryder. Joe Rodriguez.
I'm here, sir.
Robert Scamardo.
Sir, I'm here.
Veronica Soffer.
Veronica Soffer here.
And Gwen Touche.
I'm here.
Is Board Counsel Rick Morris present?
Here.
Very good, and let's see, I'm gonna check on, do we have any progress on Ms. Heliger? Okay, well, Mr. Burdine, I think everybody's present at this point except for Ms. Heliger, who I know they're resolving some of her technical issues.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree, we'll wait just a few more seconds here until it's exactly 6 o'clock. Before we get, here we go. It is 6:00 PM and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum attending on video conference. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. On March 16th, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meeting laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus COVID-19. In accordance with those suspended rules, Fort Bend ISD certifies the following. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. This meeting is being held by video conference because the convening at one location of a quorum of the governmental body is not appropriate during the COVID-19 public health emergency. Based on current guidelines from the federal, state, and county authorities concerning large gatherings and social distancing during the COVID-19 public health emergency, there is no established location for an audience to observe the meeting. However, the live meeting is audible and accessible through a YouTube link that was timely and appropriately provided to the public and media as part of the meeting posting through a news release and via the district website. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the standard instructions for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be allowed three minutes to speak. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. An audio and video recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public on the district's website. Since the audience is listening through an audio link, all board members, staff, and other participants will identify themselves by name when they speak. Ord votes will be taken by roll call. First on the agenda this evening are our audience items. To my knowledge, we do not have anyone that signed up this evening.
No, Mr. Burdine, you actually have two.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know how we, how I missed that. Mr. Roser, who's our first speaker this evening? Nevermind, I got you right here. First this evening will be Mrs. Angie Hanan. Sorry, Mr. Roser, I didn't check my emails a little second ago. Miss Hanan, can you please state your name and begin whenever you're ready? You'll have three minutes to speak. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Sure, sure, thank you, Board President Burdine, members of the board, Dr. Dupree. My name is Angie Hammond, and I'm speaking in opposition of adding of 20 minutes to the student's school day and adding 30 minutes of unpaid time to staff members' workdays. Four years ago, the district added time to the school day. I was opposed to it then, and I am opposed to it now. Research shows that extending the school day is not a one-size-fits-all solution for academic improvement, nor is there consistent evidence that shows how small academic benefits outweigh the costs and planning barriers it creates. Adding 20 minutes to the current school day will require our children be in school for seven hours, 35 minutes. The American Pediatric Association and the CDC both agree on the indisputable and detrimental effects that lack of sleep causes in children. OSHA, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration writes, "A work period of eight consecutive hours over five days with at least eight hours of sleep between shifts is defined as a standard shift. Any shift that goes beyond this standard is considered to be extended or unusual. Although our children are not part of a workforce, when you add in the hours of homework many of our kids face every night, we are asking our children to engage in a longer schoolwork-related day than OSHA recommends for adult employees. For children who engage in extracurricular activities, for older teens who work, for children who enjoy reading, or for those who like old-fashioned after-school play, extending the school day limits their ability to experience enriching activities beyond the school walls and exacerbates the aforementioned sleep deprivation issue." I recognize many of our I recognize that many of our children need targeted intervention to remediate learning gaps, however, many children simply do not need extra time on task. I recognize the TEA has issued inflexible time demands for requiring of the 75,600 operational minutes without opportunity for waiver. I know you are in a tough position as a board, but adding to the school day is not the answer. We all know teachers work far more than seven and a half hours that are currently on their contract. In a profession struggling to retain good teachers even when there is no pandemic, you add insult to injury by requiring a longer workday without compensation. Adding, asking them to add 30 minutes to their day, especially this year, a year already fraught with anxiety for many, is in my opinion, a pretty callous maneuver. Please share with us tonight how we can best use our collective voices
Thirty seconds remaining.
to express to the TEA that their rigid expectations for meeting required minutes and requiring state expectations are unreasonable and unsupported to our children, our teachers, and our community during this uncertain time. Thank you for listening, I appreciate the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanan, we appreciate you speaking this evening. Our next speaker is gonna be Ms. Glenda McCall. Mrs. McCall, you'll have three minutes to speak. Mr. Roser will give you a warning when you have 30 seconds remaining. And once the three-minute time has expired, whether or not you're finished with your comments, Mr. Roser will mute the phone line and announce that the time has elapsed. So, Mrs. McCall, whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree, President Burdine, esteemed members of the board and Fort Bend administration, my name is Glenda McCall, and I represent Fort Bend AFT, a union of almost 1,800 members. Thank you for allowing me to speak today to you about the extreme concerns that teachers, parents, and support staff are having concerning returning to the building amidst the current rise in COVID cases in Fort Bend, making our schools super-spreaders even amid the intense safety procedures and protections you're putting in place. I'm appreciative of the level of concern that you all have showing to mitigate the potential spread of the virus once staff return. However, there are still extreme concerns based on the fact that it's virtually impossible to protect our staff in all circumstances. There are staff members who are concerned with their own health, who have high-risk health concerns, and are worried that contracting the virus would essentially result in death for them. And family members, such as one elementary school teacher who is a single parent and cares for an adult daughter with an autoimmune disease and a heart condition that is extremely frail, although contracting COVID for the employee would prove relatively mild for her, the effects of COVID on her daughter would be devastating. But she still has to provide for her family, and losing her job would be devastating as well. No one can say for certain how this virus will affect anyone. You can be asymptomatic, all the way down to being hospitalized and intubated, causing long-term lung and organ damage, and eventually could cause death, even to perfectly healthy individuals. Bringing teachers in without students will not work either, as that leaves teachers with children without potential childcare options and no one to teach them at home. This is, this, there's only one sure way to be certain that staff and students don't contract this at school, and that is to work from home. This is the only sure way to prevent illness. We know this can be done effectively. My understanding is that there is a very robust, effective, and engaging online program in place for those that elect online instruction. That same system can be utilized for students at home, at least until we can be sure that the risk of infection is minimized. One last thing, it is criminal that in the midst of and not providing raises for staff that you have proposed to add 30 minutes to the school day. This equates to 11.875 days of unpaid time. You are already asking
Thirty seconds remaining.
to do so much. Truth be told, these teachers already work so much more than the regular 40-hour workweek. By compelling them to volunteer 95 hours of extra time without pay is incomprehensible. If these minutes are added to teacher contracts, they should be paid the additional 11.87 days of compensation in addition to the two extra days of pay you have proposed. This is what's fair and right, please do the right thing, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCall, we appreciate your comments this evening. Thank you, Mr. Roser. Next on our agenda this evening is closed session. We will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, under the following sections. For the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects of matter authorized by law, consider purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, personnel matters, security matters, student discipline matter, or complaint, personally identifiable information about school students. We are now convening in closed session. Trustees, please join the breakout room, as it should pop up on your screen.
President, I'm assuming you don't need me anymore, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the meeting.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Okay, have a good evening.
Yes, sir, you too. We'll wait till Dr. Dupree shows up, there you go. All right. We are now reconvened in open session. Next on our agenda this evening is to consider action on closed session items. We do not have any actions to consider, so we're going to move right along to our information items, which is going to be our update on the COVID-19 response planning for 2020-21 school year, Dr. Dupree.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna handle this presentation, and then staff will jump in and help me when they have, when we have questions. You should be able to see the presentation. Can you, Mr. President, can you affirm you can see that? Thank you.
I can see the presentation, sir.
Very good, so as we get started with this presentation, I do want the board and community to understand, hold on, sorry, you know what, I'm gonna unshare for a minute, I'd rather talk to you without you looking at the picture. So, we have a lot of, a large audience in this meeting this evening, because this is a big topic for us right now, and as you know, there's a lot of maneuvering taking place at the state level from TEA, we're getting guidance from the CDC, from our local health officials, and in Fort Bend, we have been and we continue to be dedicated to serving the needs of our students in an exemplary way, even under these very unique circumstances. And that's what makes our challenge even greater. And so, before you see even the first slide, I want our teachers and our staff and our community to understand that today, the well-being of our teachers and campus staff is my highest priority, and our highest priority as an organization. Because no matter how much we may want children to be in classrooms, we can't serve our children if the staff do not feel safe and protected, and that their well-being is being tended to as they attempt to serve the needs of our students. We have nearly 6,000 hard-working teachers who on any given day work very hard to serve the needs of our kids even before the pandemic. They worked hard, they accepted the challenge of serving children May, and back March through May as we ended last school year, and there are already many of them preparing now to serve our children during the coming year. But if they're sick, if their mental health is not protected because of fear or worry about the virus, then they're not gonna be their best for our children. So, that is my top priority, and you're gonna hear that reflected in the presentation this evening. As you would expect, I share the concerns expressed by the two speakers earlier in our, in our meeting, because those are the same, some of the similar issues we're hearing from teachers and staff right now. And so, that's where we are, lots of uncertainty. Health and safety will remain our number one priority.
They're not gonna be their best for our children.
So, someone needs to mute. So, so it's, so it's not just our teachers and staff, but it's also our students, right? There's so much data and information out there about children and becoming carriers of the virus, the adults that they live with, the adults that they go to school with. So, we have to take this very seriously. At the same time, we are dealing with a moving target. Guidance from TEA is shifting virtually every week, based on feedback, based on lots of decisions being made. I'm not being critical of TEA, they're doing their best, just as we are under these circumstances. So, with the focus we have in Fort Bend is a, is an effort toward continuous improvement. So, the announcements I make tonight, the things we discuss tonight are subject to change every step of the way, all the way up to the first day of school, all the way through the school year, because as so many of the superintendent peers I talk about, that I talk to regularly say, COVID is making the decision on many of these issues. Because the outbreaks, our local outbreaks and increase in cases, diagnosed cases and hospitalizations must inform our decision. I will tell you as well, many of the decisions we have to make are not gonna be popular and are not popular, but we have to operate from a place of integrity and a place of alignment, according to the priorities we've established as an organization. So, that's what you're gonna see reflected in the things that I share. I, my goal is to continue to operate from a place of trust and transparency, so our staff, our students, and their parents always know the bottom line, they know where we are, and they know why we are there at any given time. I believe that's just the way, you know, we may never win this game, but we're gonna keep playing this game on a fair and transparent playing field that keeps equity, student learning, safety and security in mind. So, the other thing I would share as I begin the presentation is, anyone who thinks that any, that our schools are gonna look anywhere remotely similar to what they've looked like in the past when we resumed school, needs to shift their thinking dramatically. No matter what we do come August 12th, it will not look like last August when we started school. We are operating in a new time and a new day and in a new way, and again, we're, as you've heard me say before, we are consistently transforming our organization, but that means it may look different, and it's going to be uncomfortable for many people, staff, students, and parents included, as we get used to operating in a transformed way. So, with that in mind, I wanna, I wanna spend a few minutes talking about kind of where we are. You should be able to see my presentation again now. So, I'm gonna talk in three areas tonight. Planning and change management, instructional expectations, health and safety. And I wanna start with planning and change management, just so people understand the roadmap of where we're headed for the next several weeks as we begin, as we are in the sprint towards the opening of school. So, where, what I will begin is the near-term decisions and near-term communications. So, right now, tonight, where the board is gonna discuss later, proposed revisions to the 2021 school calendar. I'm also tonight gonna publicly discuss the preliminary instructional expectations and health and safety protocols that we'll also share Wednesday night at a public, at a live public meeting. We're going to be engaging staff in some survey information, thought exchange, conversation around health and safety protocols, because I want our staff to feel like we are making decisions with them, not for them or doing things to them. So, based on all of our work, we've got some good, good recommendations, but we want staff to engage with them so we can, they can feel confident that they've had a voice as well. Going down the next few weeks, then, next Monday on the 20th, we'll be back, and we're gonna talk publicly then about social, emotional supports and operational systems. That will include busing, counseling, all the different things, but as you can see, there's a lot to talk about, and it's too much for one meeting. So, we wanted to get the health and safety and the instructional expectations out tonight. We'll come back next week with more on the other topics. We're also gonna be refining the instructional and health and safety protocols every step of the way, that's gonna be ongoing. Starting next week, we're also gonna begin a health and safety education communications campaign to be able to really start getting our community, everybody in the FBISD family used to the health and safety protocols, and in the mindset of returning to school safely whenever we open the doors to our buildings.
Dr. Dupree, your slots are not advancing, we're still on the main page if you're trying to do that.
Oh, I am trying to advance, so, okay, so that's not good. Hold on. Where are you at now? Is it moving now?
We're on instructional expectations, compulsory key considerations.
Thank you for telling me that, so we're on midterm now? Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for helping with that. So, okay, so I'm talking, I'm in the midterm, we're gonna be doing health and safety education communications campaign, and then this is the most important thing for parents right now, is we are gonna start preregistration for face-to-face or online instruction on July 22nd. This is an important date, because after this week's communications and next week's communications, parents will have all the detailed information they would need to be able to select face-to-face or online instruction. Our teachers will, our new teachers will begin new teacher orientation on July the 27th as we begin to plan to work this school year. Long-term, which is really not that long-term, but starting August 3rd, then, we'll be developing campus bell schedules, plans for classroom use, and coordinated operational schedules, including buses, technology distribution, and all those things. We'll be developing student schedules as well for online and face-to-face, and then we'll be having campus professional learning for all teachers beginning August 3rd. So, that's, they're all back on contract working as of August 3rd. And then, first day of school will be August 12th. This next one is important, because as we're coming off of a year that was truncated due to the pandemic, we are gonna begin student assessment of all students also on August 12th. We want students to be fully assessed, so we know where they are and where we need, and how we can best help them prepare for the, for the year ahead. So, let me ask, what are you seeing on the screen? Are you seeing notes and everything, or are you seeing the actual presentation?
Presentation.
Only the presentation and not notes?
The notes.
Yeah, it's in the presenter view, whoops.
So, I'm gonna
It was in the presenter view, so
Very frustrating to me, sorry. So, let me try this again. What now?
Nothing.
Nothing.
You don't see anything?
No, sir.
Dr. Dupree, do you want me to run the presentation for you, sir?
Hold on, give me a second. I used to be very proficient with technology. Let's see, let's try this one more time. Where you at?
Key considerations, learning equity, health and safety.
Are you still seeing notes, or are you actually seeing the presentation?
Presentation.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna worry about it, we're just gonna go through this. Okay, so, long-term, there we go, sorry about that. I'm developing student schedules, I've talked through this slide. We are gonna be assessing, doing a beginning-of-the-year assessment of learning, so that we can make sure we're prepared to serve students' needs, original instruction and interventions beginning, from the beginning of the year. Of course, all of this will be going through a continuous cycle of improvement and communications. So, as I've mentioned already, learning equity, health and safety, childcare impact, and logistical complexity are all the things that are on our mind as we're working through these difficult decisions. So, as we think about instructional expectations, the thing that our parents need to understand is that compulsory attendance rules from the laws are in complete force. Learning is not optional, attending school is not optional, students will be expected to engage in school on a daily basis, whether they are online or coming to face-to-face. There will not be an option to do all of your work in two or three days a week and take a break. Every student will be expected to engage in school, either in real-time, face-to-face, on Zoom or teaming with their teachers, or, or in a way where they're doing a flexible schedule, but still working in the school system, so showing, they're making progress through the learning on a day-to-day basis. The other big thing that's on this slide is that all students in Fort Bend will begin school online on August 12th. Now, there will be some limited exceptions, but we're gonna begin the year online, because we wanna make sure that everybody working in the building, our teachers and staff, have the opportunity to really get all the health and safety protocols well-refined and those systems working smoothly before we introduce students into the building. The other reason we wanna start online is because we expect we will have to close school for periods, and again, not all schools, but some schools, where the virus begins to take root perhaps, and there's a number of cases, we may have to close the school temporarily, and we need learning to continue online. That means we want, from the beginning of the year, we want our students to get accustomed to what it means to engage online, and our teachers to know how to use all of their tools so that they can continue to teach all students 100% online for any season necessary. Once that occurs, once we go for a period of time, we will begin to bring students into the building. But I wanna be clear that daily learning is required for all students. Devices will be provided where needed, and we will make special arrangements for students with no internet connectivity at all in their home. We'll support trying to gain access, or we will figure out another way to make sure that child is being educated from the first day of school. The other thing that I think, that I have to make very clear, and this is one of those decisions that will not be popular, but as we are learning fully online, we will not participate in extra or co-curricular activities. That means marching band, football practice, volleyball practice, all of those things, all of the, any class will be online during the online period with no student gatherings at the school, similar to how it was in the spring. I believe that that's one of the most important decisions we need to make to maintain alignment and the integrity, maintain the integrity of what we're doing. If students are at risk and too much at risk to come to a building, then we're, as we've seen this summer, honestly, in our strength and conditioning camps, if the students are at great risk, and the adults that work with them are at great risk, if they're, if they're showing up for athletic participation, and as important as that is, both the fine arts and the athletics are so important, but we, but they have to be set in the right priority compared to health and safety and the learning environment. Teachers will deliver all instruction from the classroom or a designated workspace with health and safety protocols in place. Of course, we will always make exceptions to those who have documented health risks. We are not gonna in any way force teachers who are at risk to come into the building. However, we are gonna provide for all teachers ways for them to enter and exit, go to their workspace in their building in a way that is contact-free. We'll have scheduled times in workrooms and those kinds of things to allow them to use the copiers, use the equipment in, on a scheduled basis, so there's not interaction with other employees in the workspace. So, we're gonna keep, again, the teachers, their health and safety at the forefront of everything we do, but we believe they'll do, that all instruction, our students will be better served if teachers are in their classrooms or designated workspace, protected, delivering instruction. Face-to-face student groups will be phased into the building over time, as I mentioned, that phasing will begin at a safe time, we want it to be soon, but it may be several weeks into the school year. Then, that's based on guidance from local health officials, the CDC, and other sources. Phasing will also be scheduled differently at each school based on need, because we have some schools that are very large in student enrollment, others are very small, and so, the phasing could take a very short amount of time at some schools, it could take a long time at a Others are very small. And so the, the phase-in could take a very short amount of time at some schools. It could take a long time at other schools. But we want to, again, so this will be where equity comes to mind. This is not going to be a one-size-fits-all solution in our district. Once phase-in is complete, students will again begin to participate in extra and co-curricular activities, the athletics and those kinds of things after school and during class on a face-to-face basis, based on established guidelines. We at this time have not gotten clear guidance from the UIL about what athletics will look like this fall or fine arts. So we are expecting that to come through at some point. Although in Fort Bend, our fine arts, I will tell you, to that regard, our, our marching bands at this point are, will be participating in non-competitive marching events. They will not be doing the, the UIL marching contest and those kinds of things. They will be engaged in learning, and there will be a marching program, but it will not be to the same level with the, with the elective contest and those, and UIL events as it typically would be. Now, I also think it's important to understand that teacher availability and school instructional space limitations will govern many of our decisions. So some secondary students will participate in school face-to-face on a rotating schedule based on space. So as I, you can see on the last bullet, pre-K to sixth grade, along with ninth grade are our top priorities for face-to-face learning because those, we have to build a strong foundation all the way through the transitional year of sixth grade. And then in ninth grade, that has been a gateway year for success in high school. So we want those children in those grades to have face-to-face if at all possible. Other students, seventh, eighth, as well as tenth, eleventh, and twelfth could be on a rotating schedule based on space allocation. As I shared with you back in June, it's possible we could have different grade levels using different spaces and different buildings based on need. Again, that will be varied throughout the district based on how many students choose online or how many students choose face-to-face and the building, the spaces that are available. Another thing that's very important that I want to point out on this slide is that the length of a school day is yet to be determined. Right now, we are, we take it to heart how important it is that students and teachers have been out of school for a period of time, and we're gonna have to give, build up the stamina again to be in school. So that's, so the length of the school day is yet to be determined. It's possible there could be some split schedules, but not very likely. But just note, we're gonna be coming up with many of these decisions over the next few weeks. As I transition to health and safety, there are seven areas I want to talk about, and you can see they all, these are all the very common things we hear a lot about, about being educated, checking and monitoring your health, hand washing, covering your face, social distancing, cleaning well. And then what do we, what'll we do if there's diagnosed cases or exposure in our buildings? So in regard to health and safety, education is our top priority. And again, we're gonna start that plan very soon. But I want you to know that everything we've developed in this area has been with, through the advisory group made up of physicians and based on CDC, TEA, and OSHA guidelines. We've had physicians, we've had child psychol, we're working with a child psychologist, child therapist, child psychiatrist, as well as infectious disease specialist, emergency specialist, critical care specialist. So we've got a a good assortment of physicians who are recognized in their field, helping us to develop and vet our guidelines in this area. Health and safety protocols, communication and training campaign, I've mentioned that. Again, the phase-in, face-to-face provides for staff education and training and student education and training. Here's one I want to make sure I emphasize with the big all capital N-O-T. Teachers will not be expected to perform all health and safety functions. I want to relieve any teacher concerns that their workload is going to be extra-heavy because of temperature-taking and healthcare monitoring. We are planning to hire wellness monitors at each campus to be able to tend to those needs, to help lead the wellness team at the school, to help do temperature checking when students arrive each morning, to take teachers and staff temperatures when they arrive. And we're not gonna just ask people to take this responsibility on in addition to other responsibilities. We want them to be able to be dedicated to that job, because if you think about any school, that will be a full-time job as student, as people come and go. Also, to help with cleaning and health monitoring, we may need some additional contracted services as well as additional staffing to make sure that we're fulfilling all of our expectations in this regard. As I go through this, you'll see more of the detail. We're gonna be proactive and precautionary in all things, all staff, all locations. That's bus depots. It's central admin, it's the warehouse, it's a campus. Every staff, I want every staff member to feel safe and protected, and that we're being proactive and guarding their well-being. So when you think about wellness monitors and wellness checks, wellness monitors are there to support the implementation of the health and safety protocols. It takes all of us to implement successfully, but they'll be kind of the whip, if you will, to make sure it's happening and holding those accountable. And the number of wellness monitors will be assigned based on need. And that'll be based, so a larger campus with a larger face-to-face might have more, will have some of each of the build at work sites. But smaller campus might have fewer, but we know that most campuses will have more than one. We will staff, all staff will be asked to complete a daily health screening on an app before they report to work. They would do it before they leave their home to indicate any symptoms they might have. And certain symptoms, they would get that red screen telling them to call HR or call their supervisor to make, and not to report to work until they've addressed those symptoms. That's one way to keep the, the virus out of our schools. All staff, students, and visitors will do a non-contact temperature check when entering the building. If a student has a fever, they will be directed to a designated area for further assessment, and parents will be contacted for student pickup as needed. All visitors will be checked upon entry, and individuals posing a risk will be expected to leave the building immediately. So for visitors, it will be more than just a temperature check. It will also be a declaration, a wellness of any symptoms they might have, much as today, if you go to a doctor or the hospital, they ask you to verify you don't have any of those symptoms. Of course, hand washing is high on the list. Staff, students, and visitors are expected to routinely wash their hands. It's required regularly throughout the day after moving throughout the building, touching doorknobs, handrails. All students will be trained and monitored in handwashing. And then hand sanitizer will also be available in, in the event you need to clean your hands without being able to, to wash them at the time. Face coverings will be required of all visitors, staff, and students. They will be worn at all times in public areas and classrooms, except on limited occasions, which will be identified. That would include eating, of course, and perhaps other times in the building. But again, that'll be, that'll be a defined list of occasions. The district will provide face coverings for students and staff, but they're all are encouraged to provide their own for comfort, but we will provide them. Training on proper wear, care and cleaning will also be provided to staff and students. And of course, some exceptions will be made for medical conditions. We will also use some face shields. We're getting a bulk order of face shields in from TEA. We also have other sources. So in some cases, the covering, often we think of a mask, but it might be a shield or other, something other than, than a cloth mask as well. Social distancing, we'll, we'll want to maintain a minimum of six feet in common areas and classroom spaces. All staff, all staff in the building will be asked and trained to enforce in the common areas. This is important because when students come for face-to-face learning, class sizes will be based on one student to forty-five square foot. So that's a ratio of one to forty-five. So an example would be in some of our newer buildings, based on TEA expectations, a classroom is eight hundred square feet. That means you could have sixteen students and one teacher in that room based on that square footage allocation. In some of our older buildings, you might have only fourteen students or fewer, depending on the square footage of the classroom. So the, so the student enrollment in a classroom will vary based on classroom size and based from building to building. So there's not a one-size-fits-all. Class sizes will vary as you go across the district. Designated building entrances will be used to control traffic flow. There'll be no congregating in halls or common areas. And as you know, this, this is a problem we're still trying to work out at the secondary level in regard to passing periods. So this is one of the ways I say, there's, there's still a lot of flexibility here about what the actual learning environment will look like in the building if, if you have to keep students from congregating during passing periods. Measures will be taken to reduce surface contact in common areas. So for example, there'll be little to no use of water fountains, some of those common things that we often, that a lot of people generally touch. Face-to-face staff meetings will be limited. Teachers have gotten accustomed to doing Zoom and Teams meetings in the spring. Will, they'll be asked to continue doing that into the fall. Online teachers or those at risk will be provided contact-free entrance into the building and workspace. Classroom and other doors should, will be manned or opened by the teacher when possible to limit contact with doorknobs. That's just an easy, easy way to keep virus-free. So in regard to cleaning protocols, our comprehensive cleaning protocols follow all CDC, TEA, and OSHA guidelines. They already do and have. Continuous cleaning throughout the day. This is different because typically our custodians do a great job after everybody's left the building. In this case, though, we'll have additional custodians cleaning continuously throughout the day with an emphasis on high-traffic, high-exposure areas and high-touch surfaces. Appropriate cleaning supplies provide, will be provided throughout the building on almost every area, in classrooms and workrooms, for staff to do immediate spot cleaning if they've used something or touched something before they move on. It's also important, I want our community to know that all disinfectants rated are rated as effective against COVID-nineteen, all of them that we use. They have been, and they are rated. So we're, we're operating in a safe, clean environment. Per CDC guidelines, outdoor play structures will not be disinfected. Playgrounds will be closed until further notice. So this means we're gonna be also using playground coordinators to facilitate recess activities other than the use of play structures. Because we have to make sure our students still have some form of active time, of un, of unstructured play, some kind of recess time. But as you can imagine, that will be challenging in a social-distanced environment. So what happens if we have a diagnosed or suspected case in the workplace? So per CDC and TEA guidance, classrooms or buildings may be closed for cleaning and disinfection. Each campus and worksite will have a COVID crisis team that will be led by the wellness coordinator. They'll also have the counselor, the nurse, the administrator, a variety of folks to conduct, to aid in conducting contact tracing. Each member will be properly trained using the Johns Hopkins methods for contact tracing. Now, this is important in the next one because we're working closely with the county. The district will, will follow all guidelines for reporting diagnosed and suspected cases, including protocols that support notification of parents and the greater school community. So we're, I've been talking regularly to Dr. Jackie Minter, the health director at the, at the county. She has been very pleased with her, her partnership with our staff and how they are handling the contact tracing during the spring and throughout the summer. And so we've got a great relationship. We also discuss the collaboration that is required between the county and the district because ultimately it will be our decision to close any schools if necessary, if there's an increase or a rise in diagnosis, diagnoses. But we will do that in collaboration with the county. They will provide guidance and recommendation based on what's happening in the greater community, in that specific school community, the contacts, the tracing information, all of that. So that will be a joint decision where they give us recommendations, and then we make the call about when it might be necessary to actually close a school or a classroom or a wing of a building or something like that. So we also know that staff could be subject to exposure or test positive. So following is, so we're gonna, we have an incident reporting protocol for close contact if you have symptoms or if you have a positive test. Self-quarantine is required if a staff member exhibits symptoms or close contact with someone who tested positive for the virus. That's different than self-isolation, which is required if someone actually tests positive for the virus. Either way, they will be asked to stay away from the workplace for the quarantine or isolation period, which is different. The quarantine period, as I understand it, is fourteen days, whereas a self-isolation period could extend until they are symptom-free for a certain amount of time. And then you have to count, start counting from when they're symptom-free. So that can be a much longer period of time. During self-quarantine and self-isolation, staff may work from home if they're able to fulfill their job responsibilities. We're trying to be very sensitive to leave because that's a very important area for all of our staff. So we don't want them to be forced into a position where they have to use leave because they're quarantined or self-isolated. So if they can perform their job, we want them to perform their job and not have to, have to lose leave time. If they're unable to fulfill their job responsibilities, though, staff will use available leave options. The Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act includes a couple of different types of leave that are, all the details are on our website for staff. And then staff also has local and state leave. We also have a catastrophic leave program in the district and a leave bank. So there's multiple options staff will be able to access for leave in the event they, that they become ill, have exposure, and need to quarantine or self-isolate. And so that's where we are. That ends, that's my formal presentation. We wanted to kind of give you that information. We're gonna start building a website where a lot of that's gonna be very publicly shared as well, and we're gonna talk through a lot of this again on Wednesday evening during another public event. So at this point, those are the big rocks on health and safety and instruction. Staff is prepared, and I'm prepared to respond to any questions the board you might have.
Thank you for the thorough presentation, Dr. Dupree. We're gonna start off with Mrs. Kristin Tossan this evening, whenever she's ready.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. So I want to first say how much I appreciate you, Dr. Dupree, and your staff and all the hard work that you guys have put in so far into helping us come up with a plan for opening our schools and and opening online learning and getting our kids back to being educated. I know that you guys have spent just hundreds of hours and overtime and vacation time and weekend time. And so I just, I, I want to not only thank you, but make sure that our community understands how hard you guys have been working for us to even get to this point. All while guidelines are either not forthcoming from state agencies or, or come out and then change the next day and maybe the next week. And I know things are constantly evolving. And so it's been a very challenging thing to do. So I just wanted to say that at the outset. I also want to say how much I appreciate that we are engaging medical professionals ourselves in order to get guidance within Fort Bend ISD specific to our community. And because, as you said, it, it is our priority, my priority, I'll speak for myself, but I, I know that my fellow trustees agree that it's a priority for us to ensure the safety and well-being of our teachers, our staff, our students. And that's what we have to look to. So I appreciate you guys making decisions with that at the forefront. I have a couple of comments and maybe a couple of questions. I'll, I, I guess I'll start with my questions. How, going to the safety protocols, we had a slide in there on face masks. And when we go back to face-to-face, this is for transitioning back to face-to-face and in-class instruction. How do we expect our younger students to keep face masks on? How do we expect our younger students to abide or adhere, abide by or adhere to these protocols?
Who would like to address that one?
Seth, would you like to address that, please?
Took me a second to find my mute. Sorry for my unmute. So our expectations are that we're going to fully communicate and train and model for our students. And, and we know from the guidelines that to have students that are in, in pre-K up through twelfth grade, who are physically able and developmentally able to wear the masks and that that is the best way for them to stay safe. And so we plan That that is the best way for them to stay safe, and so we plan. To communicate to teachers and train teachers on how to best help and equip the students to wear the masks. And to also be cognizant of the individual needs. And include within that this the social appropriate social distancing and. And communication with parents and and continued training and modeling for the students.
I would, Ms. Tosan, I would interject to that because, I mean, this is one of the ones we've done a lot of research on. And we're finding that students should be able to, and I think the campaign, the communication campaign is going to ask parents. To start getting their children accustomed to wearing them. Throughout the day, again, not all day, every day. As they would at school, but this is one of the reasons I want to be mindful of how long the school day might be. But the other issue, one of the reasons we have it the way it is, is because teachers we've talked to. Have concern, many teachers have concern that even a young child. Could expose them to the virus if they're not safe, if they're not protected, so. That's one of the unique challenges we're dealing with, right, is trying to. Protect the teachers from a child who might carry it into their into their space.
Yes, and so I, you know, I'm just going to express right now my concern, so I, I'm glad. I'm glad to hear that we're gonna, we're gonna start. With online. Because I think it's going to take us some time. To even understand how many of these protocols are feasible. I'm with parents who who want. Face to face learning for their kids, I'm, I'm, you know, I have. Children myself. In the schools and I I understand that, but I have a lot of concerns around. Whether or not these protocols are even feasible for our young children. I have concerns about kids wearing masks seven and eight hours a day or six hours a day. And so I'm just gonna, you know, throw that out there and express those concerns, I know you guys have. Done the research and done your homework and and we're consulting medical professionals to. Ensure that we're doing what's best, I mean, I I almost feel like we're. We have to choose from from bad or worse. In in how we're going to implement school, you know, do we? Have no masks and then run the risk of exposure, do we have masks all day for seven or eight hours and? Or six hours and and have a lot of the, a lot of the. You know, potential harm that could come from that. But I just have a lot of concern around that, that I just want to. You know, want to express to you guys and. And I think we've heard similar things from our our parents and community members as well. So I I look forward to seeing, you know, kind of how that's, if it's going to work and how it's going to work. As we do transition into to opening our classrooms back up. How how do we plan to support teachers who have? Children who are not, who can't go to school because we're providing. Online, at least at the outset.
Well, that again, that's one of the issues we're still working through, that's one of our dedication to our teachers, we're working with our extended learning department. To see if they can support us. But as I mentioned earlier, where there's going to be, even though it's going to be online, it may be necessary to allow teachers to bring their children to a school setting with them. And I know then that creates a whole nother risk, right, for the kid. And that teacher of having them exposed. So we're working through that and we're working with a lot of teacher focus groups, trying to. Get the answers to these, these are some of the most complex issues we have to deal with.
Yes, and I know that it is extremely complex and especially with the number of employees and number of students that we're dealing with, it's just. It's a massive, massive undertaking. So I, you know, I know that that's going to be one of the things that comes up. And has come up with our teachers. I I have some concern as well, I know we had a speaker earlier about extending. The school day and you talked a little bit about that. I I know, I know the the mindset might is that we are trying to. Support our teachers and give them additional, perhaps give them additional time and. Planning time, and I know we have to now build in a lot of things that we didn't have. Previously and and when we're implementing traditional school. But I agree and have some concerns about extending our school day, I'd be. Interested to hear more, I'm glad that we're going to be questioning staff. And getting their inputs because I'd be interested to hear. How they feel about that, I mean, there may be teachers who want the extra time. Or need the extra time. But I think we certainly, as you said, don't want to do anything to them. It's going to be challenging enough when they go back. And I I think we want to be sure that. That we're supporting them and not putting additional burden on them. So I appreciate that you guys are going to be seeking feedback on that. I I guess. I guess the last thing I'll say, and then and then I'll let my colleagues maybe. Ask some of some questions, some some questions that I probably have in addition, I I wanted to. Point out, I think we, all the trustees received the same email today from. A parent in Fort Bend I S D. And she said she was writing as a concerned healthcare worker. Who's been working through the pandemic and at the in the Memorial Hermann system and she's watched. Patients rise over the past few weeks from one hundred and forty two when school closed. To a thousand and forty one currently admitted, and this includes. Children admitted with COVID in the P Q. And I just wanted to, I wanted to read this because I thought it was important for us to keep, keep this in mind. And she says, she feels like. Putting the kids back in school right now is not in their best interest. She says they have had the virus spread in the workplace between colleagues, surgeons and medical staff. When eating lunch and in break rooms. These are trained adults who took precautions and were socially distant. We do safety checks, have gloves. Plentiful medical grade wipes and sprays, masks and face shields provided. Do I think that children will be able to tolerate these and safely implement? What will be needed to keep the spread from occurring, she says no. Do I think I was safe with all of the above protocols? I used to, but I've received the you've been exposed letter no less than six times in the last. Couple of months. So I just wanted, you know. I'm I'm trying to make decisions for my my child as well, and as a trustee. I'm taking all of this information in and concerned about teachers and staff, as I know my fellow trustees are. And I just wonder. Schools are going to be the largest gatherings. Right now. Of no one's, the governor's not even allowing. These kinds of gatherings anywhere else, we have restaurants mandated at fifty percent, we have bars closed. We had the recent in person Republican convention is now not going to move forward. And. And we have T E A. Saying you have to open your classrooms. To a hundred percent of your children if they want to go or we won't fund you. But by the way, we're not going to go back to work any sooner than January. So I I'm, you probably can hear the frustration in my voice. You know, I I'm frustrated that I, we are getting pressure. From the state and from state agencies to. Put all these kids and teachers and everyone back together. When they're not even doing that at the state level and other employers are not even allowed. To do that by executive order. So as much as I want school to reopen and I really want my ninth grade student who's transitioning to have. Face to face and. I am just very, very concerned about. Putting all of these kids and and adults. Back in these classrooms, even with all of these, these protocols we have in place. So I just, I just wanted to express that, I think it's what a lot of parents are feeling right now. Even those who really want their kids to go back to school and want schools to reopen. I think there's still some angst and anxiety. I have an aunt who is in the healthcare industry and. And we're just seeing lots of. Young people and kids who we thought couldn't get this in the hospitals and I just don't want us to. To, you know, even even with the protocols, I just, I have a lot of concern about us. Opening back up too quickly, so. That's all I will say, but I will say that I I support. The online at the beginning to ensure that we have. Everything in place that we we feel like we need in place and to continue gathering that information. And guidance from our medical professionals.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosan, Mrs. Helliger, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Dupree and staff, I have the same remarks as Ms. Tessanne around. Appreciate all the hard work and and dedication to. Making the best decision for our children and our staff as we. Transition into this new school year. I like, Ms. Tessanne has lots of frustration, anger. I've had, you know, several different types of emotions. Over the last few weeks around sending. Our kids back to school, thinking about our staff members. Because it's like, it's almost an impossible situation. That we're trying to. Make possible. And, you know, as Kristen just said around her, the example that she used for a healthcare worker with all their precautionary. Measures that they used and they were still exposed. Here we are, a school system. We're not a medical system, a medical clinic, you know, or anything like that, we are a school system. With various different. Children and. Staff members and. I would be remiss to say I'm not worried, you know, and I just want to be real transparent and. And share with you, you know, I have, I have a twelfth grader that's going back to school. And at first I was like, okay. Based on his special needs, and this is where my question is coming, going to. You know. He needs the support, and so. I was thinking, okay, definitely he needs to go back to school so that he can get those necessary supports. Because he can't get it here at the house. So, but the more and more I hear the stories, the more and more angst I have around it. Because of his ability to. Bring it back into the home, I'm not working it, I'm not leaving the house to work. I'm here day in, day out in my. In this office here. And so for him to go in and out the house is where, you know. You know, I I can be exposed, my mother can be exposed, you know, people who are elderly and some people who have. You know, underlying in health conditions. So my question is, and I'm going to get to. A special. I want to talk about special needs children. We we talked about. You know, we're going to require that, we're going to require students to be online. Full time. What does that look like for our special needs children? How are we going to, how are we going to monitor that? What kind of? Disciplinary actions are going to be imposed on them? Their inability to. To sit, you know, in extended period of time, because we, I don't know what, I don't know what the day looks like yet, so I'm just kind of. Going off of a regular day, what does that look like so for our special needs children?
Well, I'll take that one. Ms. Helliger, this is Deena Hill, and so as we're working to to finalize what. Instruction would look like online for all students, we're also doing that. Same planning collaboratively and in thinking about how that will look different for students served with special ed services. You know, some of the students that we have can work really well with synchronous instruction. For an hour or two straight, some cannot, right, so depending on their disability, their needs. We would need to break up that instruction in different ways and use instructional strategies and behavioral strategies. Just as we would in the classroom to to find the the best way to to get them to respond. Certainly, you know, we do recognize that. Parents, you know, this puts more on parents because parents are going to be at home, they would. Need to help prompt and and help redirect their students, and so we recognize that. Which is why, you know, we think that we'll have this online option for parents who choose that. But the other thing that we're looking at are things like, you know, tell a hell so their counseling can continue, but it would be done. In a different format as opposed to face to face. And really just working with all of the other support staff that would wrap around that student, whether it's their. You know, one on one pair professional, whether it's their their teachers, whether it's their behavior specialists and the different people that come in and support them. To really provide the best environment that we can in an in an online world that is, it's difficult and we recognize that. We have had some success with some in home instruction for some few students that are our most significant students. And we've done, we've kind of piloted that this summer. To get a, to get an understanding of what that might look like in the event that we need to do something like that. So we're trying all different formats to to find a way to serve our students so they can make progress. And just knowing that all of their needs are different and, you know, we're just going to have to respond to that.
Okay, thank you, so. Before the the guidelines, T E A guidelines were put out last week. We were looking into or have some conversations around or thought process rather. Around possibly doing some hybrid. Classes, is that still on the table, Dr. Dupree?
So the hybrid that we're talking about at this point has kind of been. Demoted, if you will, to a backup plan. So if you think about what I, what I mentioned earlier about trying to get our full. Our kiddos in the youngest grades in class full time every day, if possible. And then the ninth graders, then what we have to do is allocate the remaining space. To stu, to the other students who want to come face to face. It may be necessary based on space and teacher scheduling to ask some of those students to be on a hybrid plan. But that's not a leading option, it's not a third option, if you will. It's a backup if we don't have the seats to do. Face to face for all the kids who want that at the secondary level.
Okay, so it's a backup, meaning that based on. Class sizes, class teacher availability, will we determine that, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, exactly.
Okay. So. So if I decide, I'm just. Any parent decides, okay, we're going to, we're going to try this, or we're going to trial line, or we're going, we're going to go, we we choose to do a. You know, send our child in person, but then. You see that the numbers are starting to. Even more increase. And I say this is not going to work for me, can I then switch?
Well, this, you know, we were still working on this, right now. The T E A says we can, we can ask parents to commit. To a six week period. Of staying with whatever their choice was, online or face to face. We're, we're thinking definitely will have to be a full grading period, nine weeks in Fort Bend at a minimum. And maybe a full semester, but absolutely there will be a mechanism. For parents to to swap out at some point if they, if they want to reconsider their decision.
Okay, so another question that I have is around our graduating seniors this year. Preparing our, I mean, every year is the same thing, we want to make sure that. Our kids are prepared and ready to graduate. We have some students that do not, may have some recovery that needs to be done. I want to, you know, just talk about that commitment to. Especially those students to ensure that they're not left behind. And that they're able to, you know, graduate. As if they were, you know, we were going to school, you know, regularly, the, what's the word I'm looking for? The interventions that we would have in place to ensure that those kids would graduate. I want to make sure that we're still doing that because we have kids in the district. That are there, and the thing about the online learning. For for some some students, it works very well, for some others. It it doesn't at all, and so what we've done is we've created a standard. That says everybody has to meet this particular standard. And now with this different modality of of learning. It's unfair to have this same standard for everyone. Moving forward, and so I just want to make sure that we are. Taking that into consideration.
You know, you've raised a really good point, and so my my takeaway from what you've said. As I think about scheduling, if there's two things that come to mind, one. Is there is going to be, to me, and in an online learning environment, there's more flexibility. is there is gonna be, to me, and in an online learning environment, there's more flexibility for a student to do schedule switches more quickly and easily, to be able to do remediation interventions to help them get caught up rather than what, what in a, in a hard schedule in a building where you're moving from space-to-face, space-to-face, space-to-space, there's ways to be able to do that more nimbly, I think, online. But the other thing I want to make sure that I agree with you 100% of the online modality is not for all students. But I think this, this, in the fall, what you're gonna find is there will be significantly more direct instruction um dur- online in real time. So I think part of the the obstacle many of our students faced in the spring was they were having to watch videos and do a lot of things, worksheets and things without direct instruction. They didn't get that direct in, for many of our students, they weren't getting time with teachers that were teaching the materials. They were, there was a lot of self-learning going on. But in the fall, the children will have, they'll be much more face-to-face, direct. Even if it's through the camera, there'll be face-to-face learning that will help some. But I'm, uh, but I agree with you, that would not fully mitigate the online experience that you miss out on when, the things you miss out on when you're with a person in a relationship in a classroom, side by side.
Okay, and my last question is around this whole, the modality and and teachers. I know we have teachers that are in various um um experiences and levels when it comes to teaching online. What is our plan to make sure that our, you know, that the district is leveled out when it comes to um those capabilities from our, from our teachers? Because I mean, I talked to a teacher this weekend and and um her concern was that, you know, she's having to learn a a different type of skill set um that she, you know, hasn't always, you know, had to to do. And you want to make sure that they're proficient at the same level as the others. So the different, different capabilities that are being used um in a classroom that's online, you know, make sure that everyone is able to do that. And then for those hybrid classes, I assume that they're, well, there will be teachers that will be teaching both an in-person and online class at the same time. Is that correct? Okay, so just making sure that, you know, the teachers have the training and supports um that they need in order to be able to um to fully deliver in 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 that um in that mode. Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yep, somebody can. Stephanie, Gwen, Beth?
Yes, I can take that, Dr. Dupree. Um, I'll be addressing that at length in the calendar presentation, but um in short, TEA has provided guidelines that teachers need time, just as you've said, to practice the use of instructional delivery in the online instructional model. So we have been working really hard on our initial start-of-school PD week to allow teachers significant time for not just learning the technology tools, but practicing and demonstrating proficiency with those in a lesson delivery model. I'll be talking about what that looks like in the presentation, but there'll be um six days where teachers have around four hours a day to work towards setting up their online instruction. And then the job embedded learning that goes on throughout the school year will provide supports for teachers who may need additional support to use a tool or to use it in in instruction to engage kids in collaboration or communication.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Helliger. Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mr. Burdine, and uh thank you, uh, Dr. Dupree and all the staff for this presentation. I want to echo really all the things that Mrs. Tosan and Ms. Helliger said, both in terms of how well you've handled the complex situation and are trying to develop plans to steer us through it. Um, and all the time you've put in, as well as all the comments that they made, um really the questions they asked and the things that need to continue to be developed. I would, I think all of those things were, nearly all of them were on my list or on my mind. I have a few more to add. Uh, one of the things, just to pick up on something that Ms. Helliger talked about, when we start online in the beginning uh of a school year, and then I heard you say we're gonna transition uh to face-to-face when it becomes safe or if it becomes safe. Um, how will we be, how will we be developing the relation, the student-teacher relationship at the beginning of the school year? At the end last year, we already had those relationships in place. Um, but I know parents are wondering, I won't even know my teacher, my child won't know their teacher. How will we, how will we build those relationships?
Uh, thank you for that question. Oh, go ahead, Deanna.
Well, I would say that um just as we do, uh as we, as we start every school year, um, in this case, we're gonna be phasing in, as Dr. Dupree um mentioned. And part of that orientation and phase-in will include that relationship building with students. Um, through a synchronous environment, although it may not be the ideal because they they may not be physically present in the same classroom, um, there are strategies that can be used in a synchronous environment that do um afford opportunities for teachers to get to know their, their, their students and build um those relationships. Um, and then there are asynchronous activities that can be used to reinforce that then can be brought back in a synchronous environment to continue to work through that relationship development. Uh, then, as we bring kids into the classroom little by little, I think that the other piece that will contribute to relationship building is that education um and the campaign efforts. Um, but the education with teachers on building the, the, um, I guess the classroom routines um associated with health and safety. Because those things will um help teachers develop relationships with kids. It's not just about classroom management and enforcing rules. It's all, all, it's also about creating a culture and a community in the classroom, and you could do that synchronously with health and safety in mind and also um, you know, the learning piece. Um, so i- i- it's gonna look different, as Dr. Dupree mentioned, but it's possible even in an online environment uh to work through, through those relationship-building um activities. Stephanie, did you have anything to add?
You covered it. Thank you.
Have, have you guys considered um having the, especially at the younger grades, having the teachers move up with the students? Um, kind of as a cohort, uh, have the teacher move, move up a grade?
We haven't talked specifically about that, but that, that's something that we can certainly take note of.
All right, that's just an idea because that seems that, especially at the younger grades, that relationship and building trust is so important um in in, you know, in the, in the school environment. Um, okay, and then you touched on this a little bit, or maybe it was in the slideshow and it was, I'm, I kind of missed it. Um, when somebody tests positive in a school, whether that's a student or a child, um, is that, I mean, I'm sorry, or a student or a staff member, is that going to be, how's that gonna be communicated? How will people know? How, what, what's gonna be known, what's not gonna be known? How is that gonna go?
Gwen, you want to take that one?
Gwen is online and she has been leading the effort thus far with our staff. We've had protocols in place. She'll walk you through that and what that'll look like when students return.
Good afternoon, President Burdine, Board, and Dr. Dupree. Um, for currently, we are working with the social and emotional group, and we currently have protocols in place. Anytime we receive information for employees and our students in this situation, we have two different items. If we have a confirmed case of COVID, there's a completion of a risk, we call it a risk assessment, and we work with the local health department and the county which employee resides in. And then, of course, we go through the process that have. That process includes um the c- um contact ter- tracing, I'm sorry, contact tracing as well. And locally for us, what we do is we obtain the names of the employees, if it's something on campus or at a department. We get that information and we work with the local departments and provide that information. And our current team that we're calling the COVID team in-house, we get that information, we contact employees, and we also provide them with resources. And those resources can help them in a mirror of items. And then we also do a follow-up with them. We work with the health department to provide that information. We also received a release from them as well. And once we get that, there's a form that they have to complete, that we inform the supervisors that the employee is okay to return to work. And in terms of the student aspect, we follow the similar, similar process as well, and we do have a protocol incident reporting um that we currently follow, and that has seemed to work pretty effective for us for this um summer.
Okay, so if a, a, if in my child's class, my child's going to school on a campus, face-to-face learning, if someone in, in uh her class tests positive for COVID, will I be notified?
Yes, we do have a notification plan, and we work with the communications department for that. Yes.
Okay, and then if, if someone at the school uh tests positive as a parent of a, of a student, will I be notified?
Yes, we have an obligation to provide that notification. And also it goes directly aligned with contact tracing because some of those employees and our students may need to have that information, and we inform them in advance that they can expect a call from the local health authority.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, my next question has to do with um building capacity. Dr. Dupree, you mentioned that there was uh some guidance about 45 square feet per student. Um, and, you know, that's not our normal uh spacing of students in buildings. So how, what is our building capacity compared to our student population, or what kind of analysis have we done of that? Or is that still to come? Are we still working on that?
Yes, ma'am, that is still to come. Yeah, right now, what our goal is, there's, you know, there's two levels of uncertainty. One is teacher level of commitment to returning to a face-to-face environment, and then the number of families who request face-to-face. And then once we have all of that, we'll cycle that through. And then that comes back to Ms. Helliger's question about whether we need hybrid or not, but she can kind of see how that flows as we give the, the building blocks for the decision-making, then we'll be able to, to, to put all that, make it much more detailed for you.
Okay, so that's great. And I'll just pick up on that to say then, because I, I, I think I heard you say some of these things earlier, but I just want to reiterate um the things that are important to me, and that is that, and I think really the whole board, that our teachers and our staff are really a high, high priority. And that they have, in order for them to able to do, be able to do a good job teaching, they've got to be healthy. They've got to be well. They've got to feel safe. So that obviously is a, is a, a key piece to the whole process. And I guess the other fact of this is they have to be mentally healthy as well and mentally well because there's just so much change. School's gonna look so much different. All the processes are gonna be different. There's gonna be nothing that's automatic, it seems to me. And, and I just feel that um I just want to respect that and make sure that we are not overloading people and expecting too much of them. And we have to start slowly and start small uh with our, with our expectations. I just feel really uh concerned that um the launch, if you will, we just have to be really careful about it. Um, and, and I just want us to really respect our, our teaching staff, but also all of the staff, the, the principals, the, all, you know, everybody, everybody on a campus. It, it's just so much change. Um, but um I just feel it's really important that we recognize it and then pace our work according, accordingly. I know that when we all started working from home, um, it was hard to get going. It was very slow at first. And um I just think this is gonna, we're gonna experience that all over again. And you've kind of alluded to it, but I, I just wanted to, to reiterate that. Um, another question I have, and this is probably still to be investigated as well, but I know there's been quite a bit of talk um from scientists around uh air circulation in a building and how important that is to the health and wellness in a building. Air filtration, air circulation, and um someone al- alluded to it, I think, earlier about being outside and and how that that was a healthier environment. And I guess, have we done any studies or are we planning to do any um evaluation of our, of our air filtration systems and our air circulation in our buildings?
I guess, ma'am, I can take that question. Uh, the answer is yes, we have. We're, you know, we're looking at the limitations of our uh air handling uh systems, and we're uh looking at the uh, what, what we call the, the MERV uh rating, which is, which is a minimum efficiency reporting value. So we, as you, as you get a filter that filters more particles, you uh, you know, you're heading towards a HEPA filter, you have to go ahead and look at the equipment you have and see, you know, how much restriction can you apply to that unit before it starts to literally choke down on its own. So we are, we, we're doing, we're, we're doing that, and uh we feel that we have a handle on, you know, how far we can go. Uh, we can go as far as HEPA filters, but if we do that, we're going to have to make some uh additional modifications because our uh systems that we have right now do not support HEPA filtration. We can put them in there, but it will require some modification, but we feel that we can definitely go beyond what we're providing right now.
Okay, so that's great information. Thank you, Mr. Perez. And will we, will parents be able to get this information about their child's school in a, in a timely way so they can make, in case that would um influence their decision about face-to-face or being present in a building versus not? Will you be, will you be publishing that information?
Yes, ma'am, we will.
Okay, good. Um, uh, then one, another question around um instruction, well, it's not really instruction, it's the dreaded STAR testing. Has there been any um information from TEA about what we can expect um around uh the testing schedule and cycle?
At this point, we're expecting to have, there, he's indicated, the commissioner, that they're gonna do STAR on schedule. They are expanding the window um into, I believe, June for those districts who are extending their school years significantly, but it's um at this point, it's simply an expansion of the window, so students would be tested in May or June. But as of now, accountability and STAR are on track um per, per usual.
Okay, well, we can put that on our list of um advocacy issues because I, I think there's gonna be quite a few coming out of this next few months as we, as we get going. Um, okay, I, I think that's my main, those are my main questions. I, I also want to point out something I think Mrs. Tosan mentioned earlier, or maybe it was Ms. Helliger, I'm not sure, but it almost sounds as if we are trying and being forced to plan two full systems of school. Um, we're planning a face-to-face system, which is gonna be completely different than what we, you know, whatever normal is. And then we're planning an online version, which is something we've have a little bit of experience from the last nine weeks. And I just feel that that is so stressful to the capacity of the organization and the the staff and the people that are trying to plan. So while I recognize that that might be necessary, I also would just all, I don't even know what to suggest about that, except that it, it just seems overwhelming. It just seems overwhelming. And, and so you may have to, and find yourself focusing on one thing and then cycling back around and do the second. I don't know, but um, it seems difficult, I guess, is what I wanted to say. And then I guess my next comment is um one of the other trustees said this as well, and I, I agree with it wholeheartedly. To a, to a very high degree, I feel very responsible for, almost for the health and wellness of the community. Because as we talk about 11,000 employees and 79,000 Seventy-nine thousand students, that is a large, large number of people in our community. Uh, and even if all of them don't live here in Fort Bend County or in Fort Bend ISD, many of them travel in and out all the time and that. Each of those people has their own family and has their relatives and has their neighbors. And I just start to see the chain reaction of impossibility of containment. When we start to put all these people together. I feel very responsible about that. Um, and I, so I guess. If it, if it was up to me, proceed with caution, proceed with caution. I can't, I'm not in a position of having to decide if my own child will go back to school or not. But at this point, for me, my own personal life, I'm not even really interested in going to a restaurant. And I'm an adult and I can wash my hands and I have hand sanitizer in my purse. And I can take every precaution, but I just not sure how we can. Um. Gather people in large spaces and then somehow be responsible for keeping everything clean and keeping everything together. Which the parents will look to us to make sure we're cleaning, we're sanitizing, the books, the desks, the doorknobs. The the, you know. If my child needs to borrow a pencil, what happens? You know, it just on and on and on it goes. Um, and and so. I guess my, yeah, I'm a cautious person by nature, but I see this really as a proceed with caution kind of situation because. All, all those people coming together, um. I I think could could cause, honestly, could cause. The situation to get worse in our community rather than uh, than heal. So. Those are, I think those are my comments for now. I thank you very much for all the effort you put into. Um, into the planning thus far. I know this is just the tip of the iceberg because of the devils in the details. So, uh, thank you for the presentation and the chance to ask questions.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mrs. Drew.
So, I mean, um, my my comment is really a clarification. And I first want to start out by saying, you know, I appreciate the detail um, that you went into, Dr. Dupree. I know that you and staff really uh, put a lot of effort into um, coming up with this plan. I know that you've worked. Really long, hard hours personally. Um, and I truly applaud you for leading. Instead of lagging the effort to keep our students and staff, you know, their health at the forefront of all of our decisions as an ISD. So, um, my uh, clarification really um, surrounds the fact that uh, you mentioned that. Um, if a staff member had some sort of health diagnosis that kept them from um, coming to uh. Coming back to work, um, that you would consider that. And I guess I'm putting on my psych nurse hat right now. And my um, question for you or my clarification for you is, is fair being considered as one of those diagnosis. I mean, I do have to say that, you know, I myself am slightly closet OCD. And so, I I too, you know, like uh, Mrs. James said, I I err on the, I tend on the side of caution. I, you know, had the opportunity today to give out PPE to a lot of the fine art staff. And a lot of that decision came from the fact that, you know, um, as as I'm standing out there. And I have a husband that might get exposed to this, you know, if he's with some other staff member, do I really know? Um, whether they've been exposed to the virus or not. So, my concerns are not only from students, but from staff. And just in general with even some of, you know, the precautions that I saw staff taking as we were handing out PPE today. So. Just, I guess my clarification is around whether we're considering that fear is truly a diagnosis.
Well, so Gwen and Glenda may want to speak to, but it's from my perspective, this kind of falls into the category. Of what I mentioned during our last public meeting, the idea there are those who are able and willing to come to work. There are those who cannot. Because of diagnosed health risk conditions, and then there are those who will not out of their own fear or anxiety. Um, I think we have options for all of those categories. But I mean, but but this, that, what you're hitting on is the most challenging aspect of it because. If someone has a fear, but they're not a diagnosed health risk, how do we handle that as an organization? You know, the way I'm choosing to handle it is to still work and to try to guide our principals and all of our staff to say. We have to honor people's level of comfort, their feelings of safety. As I said earlier, my goal is to keep teachers in Fort Bend ISD. I don't want anybody leaving because they feel like their hand is being forced. But I'm also gonna ask them to work with us and trust us to to help to protect them to the best of our ability. Knowing that even in going to the grocery store, there is risk. So I want to make sure that people are, this is gonna sound off, but I want to make sure people are living their own integrity, if you will. So don't tell me that you can't come to work because you don't feel safe. But then you're going out to eat or you're going to restaurants and you're doing all these other things in the community. Because that's because people do violate their own integrity in that way at times. And so. We're I'm, we're willing to put ourselves out there in a fully transparent and trusting way for the organization and on our staff, but I want them to reciprocate.
I appreciate that. That was really my only clarification. As I, you know, sat there and interacted with uh, teachers today, I saw the different, the varying levels of comfort with interaction. And I just wanted to make sure that we as an ISD were at least um. Aware of that and, you know, applying that as part of our decision-making process. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Drew. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. And Dr. Dupree, I want to thank you for the presentation. Um. You know, as a small business owner, the work we do is considered essential work. So we have been open the whole time. And we've had to practice uh, sit and put in place safe protocols. The uh, the COVID virus has spiked up. There's, I've had. Employees who have been exposed to people who have uh, COVID nineteen. And they've had to shelter in place, they've had to be tested. Uh, we have a pretty rigorous. Uh, policy in place at work and. As a business owner, I feel responsible for all of my employees. And as a trustee, there's not just one trustee who feels responsible for all of our staff and student. It's all of us. It's all of us. And and I know it's you and your staff too. So it's all of us. No one on the school board wants anyone to get sick. And we, we're gonna take the appropriate action to uh, make sure that. Our students are safe, our our teachers and staff are safe. Because the, if they get sick, they'll carry that home and possibly expose a parent who's in an at-risk category. And nobody really wants that to happen. So I just wanted to tell you uh, good work on that and I look forward to. Moving forward with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um. So, I think most of what needed to be said has been said, so I I'll just offer a couple thoughts and comments. Um. Somebody brought up the fact that, I don't remember who said it, but uh. We we are kind of in an impossible situation. And I know that was kind of a term that was used in the email that. That Ms. Tosan uh, referenced that we received today as well. Um, I was one who was just so hopeful that we would begin at least with a hybrid system. And allow kids to get back face-to-face. And I know many are 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 gonna be disappointed. Um, uh, that that that's not gonna happen off the bat. Um, and I I actually went back today and looked for very results that were sent out and. And as Ms. Tosan noted, that that was completed on the tenth of June. And um, you know, like it or not, there's, there's certainly been increases and I was one that was following the data every single day. And um, and one of the questions was, uh, if things, you know, picked up, uh, what would be your comfort level and and that? Uh, the 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 level of 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 people who would be uncomfortable sending their kids to school went up to, I think, seventy-two percent. Um. Was, I think, parents. And so you combine that with with teachers who, you know. Like Charles said, we don't, we don't want to lose our teachers. Teachers don't grow on trees. And and we 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 just can't force them to 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 come to work in 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 this situation. Um, and, you know, for for folks who may be, you know, disappointed that that their their kids. Aren't gonna start off the year face-to-face. I mean, there's this, it's a logistical nightmare. And I mean, we couldn't even guarantee that that your, that your student's teacher would be there. Um. Especially, you know, the specialized teachers, once you, once you get to the secondary in high school. Um, so, yeah, if your teacher's not even gonna be there, um, it it it, yeah, going back to school, it it, you know, face-to-face. There's no advantage to it. Um. I think the likelihood that schools will get shut down over the near term. Had we tried to open right off the bat, um, that likelihood is very high, just like, I mean, we tried, we, I think we were. We were fairly aggressive with trying to open, you know, sports camps and uh, and training camps and. They got shut down because cases spiked. Um, and and as were 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 our kids or staff were were diagnosed. Uh, were tested positive. Um, and so that same thing is is, I mean, it's the likelihood of that happening. Is very high. And I think you made a great point about. If we were to try to start off in person and a week later, a school had to be shut down. And we don't know what the rules are yet. There's been discussion uh, from the governor about how long schools would have to be shut down for. Um, I know in our survey, the the question, you know, people, people said they'd be comfortable if it was shut down two weeks. I I don't think that's what the governor was 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 saying, as you and I discussed today. On the phone. Uh, but then you gotta go back and start back to online. And so I think if we can start off online and everybody gets re- reoriented to that and comfortable with that again. Um, once schools do open, um. Then if we have to, you know, shut down a campus or two, then then kids will be more comfortable getting back, you know, into that online. Uh, situation, at least until it's safe to return. Um, the other thing that that has to be considered is transportation. Um, how many kids do you put on a bus? You know, those buses are air-conditioned, so you're getting recirculated air. Um. Do we have to add routes? I mean, there's only a certain amount of buses that we have. There's a certain amount of money that we have. Um, so I I I just want to say that um, I know, I know there's gonna be a, you know, a good portion of of folks that are gonna be disappointed. But I I I have to support your decision here. And I hope that the TEA and the governor realize that when they do come up with with final rules. Um, that not all districts are the same. Okay, so as somebody else pointed out, the district. Uh, our district is very different from some rural district where they might have one high school or a middle school. Um, and and so they they need to keep that in mind when when they do come out with their. Uh, final rulemaking and and make sure that that they don't try to punish. Districts for for trying to act responsibly uh, when it comes to funding. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. I think that we've heard from every trustee this evening and. Dr. Dupree, I wanted to, uh, we had lots of great conversation, um, lots of great comments and questions from trustees. And uh, once again, I wanted to thank you and your staff for all the extremely long hours and all the hard work. And working toward basically a moving target. Um, and I know that's extremely difficult and uh, you've. You've done a great job of working through that and leading. I just have a few uh, short points here. Um, I think Mrs. James had said this earlier in the meeting, um, which I think is extremely important, which is uh. Safety should be a guiding principle on what it is that we're doing. And I know that you're, that is what you're doing. And Mr. Rosenthal just made another great comment, um, which is. We do have a very unique community and our community looks very different than other communities. And and I know that that is part of of the planning process as well, and you guys are keeping that in mind, but. Um. Really, my last comment is, and I know this is very difficult to do, but. Um, part of all the craziness with this is is the unknown. And I know that we're gonna have to modify along the way and we're gonna have to change along the way as 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 time goes on. Um, but if we can provide as much clarity and consistency as possible. Uh, I think that'll be very helpful. So people can, even though they may not like what the decision may be, but they can at least depend on. Um, some consistency going forward. And I think that would help our community a lot. So. With that being said, thank you for the presentation. Thanks for uh, all the thorough information. We will look forward to an update next week. And with that being said, I would like to take a seven-minute break to use the restroom. Or whatever else you need to do, stretch. So let's go ahead and reconvene uh, nine PM sharp, please. Thank you. All right, in about thirty seconds here, we will. Reconvene a meeting. There's Mrs. Drew. Mrs. James will be with us in just one second here. We'll wait for her. Mrs. James, Mrs. Drew. All right. Mrs. Drew, are you with us? Did you just go off screen for a second?
I had to put my cat out of my office. I'm back.
No worries. Just wanted to make sure the uh, the board and the superintendent were here before we get going. So. Next on our agenda this evening, seven-eight-one is the consideration and possible approval of our revised twenty-twenty-one school year calendar. And as I was uh, sitting here during our break and reflecting on our previous conversation this evening. Uh, before we went through this presentation, I wanted to get the board's thoughts on whether or not we should. We should even um, approve the revised calendar if if we're going to go throughout the year and maybe have to to change some things up as we go. Um, do you, can anyone speak, does anyone like to say anything or have to have a comment about that? Ms. James?
Sure, well, I'll say something. Uh, I guess. I'd like to know what Dr. Dupree's recommendation is, but it seems that so many things are changing and in flux and uncertain. That while we might take action now, we might have to take more action in the future and in the future. So. I I guess I'd like to hear what Dr. Dupree's suggestion would be, but it just seems that there's. I'm not sure we have enough certainty to to vote on a calendar and say, in stone, this is what it's gonna be.
I agree. Mrs. Tosan, did you want to comment on that?
Well, I I agree with Mrs. James. So I would like to make a comment, but I'd like to hear from Dr. Dupree first. Dr. Dupree, do you? Do you have a recommendation for us this evening or do you have um, uh, information you'd like to provide?
Well, I'll be honest, we have a recommendation on the table, but. Based on even if, you know, as we've talked about numerous times, things are very dynamic and based on even information I have learned today. Um, through some various meetings I have been in and then the board's conversation this evening, I'm feeling less um. Less confident that we need to move forward with approving a calendar right now. Because I think it seems pretty clear that we are gonna be opening school um, on. Because I think it seems pretty clear that we are going to be opening school, um, online and that we may be online for quite a while. And I think that that's going to dramatically affect, um, student interventions. It's going to affect, you know, if you think about even trying to determine the length of a school day right now is going to be challenging. And I, and if I'm going to be honest, my gut tells me we need to postpone consideration of the calendar. We need to start school, kind of see the, how the virus trends. And then come back to the board later with a recommendation, um, to maybe modify effective as of January or as of October, November, where we have a little more stability and perhaps at that time, a little more certainty. The other thing that's really come to my mind, again, as I've, as I've engaged with teachers and some parents today on email and on the phone, it's really on my mind, the weight that teachers are carrying, the burdens they're carrying right now, just about health and their wellbeing. And to put the additional burden of the extended day on them, which I do, I will tell you, I do think that that's the right thing to do. But I'm not sure it's the right time to do it. And that we need, that I think we need to respect the teachers' needs. Um, and just the, their overall emotional and, and so the emotional and mental health in regard to what they're going to be coming back to. We're in online, even online, because that enough is going to be enough stress. So I think we could certainly press on, but I don't think it would be, I, I really don't think it's in our best interest to do that right now, is I guess where I'm at.
So I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that. And, um, and because I think I, I said earlier that I was, I was concerned about the additional, 30 minutes that would be added to the day. And I'm, and I agree with you that, um, given that lots of things are up in the air, we're not a hundred percent sure what teachers are going to need or when they're going to need it. We're not a hundred percent sure how this online learning is going to go, since it is going to look much different than it did in the spring. Um, because we have to be able to deliver with fidelity, um, our curriculum. And we may need days sooner rather than later. We may need days, you know, two days now and two days in a month, next month. And, you know, I, I don't know. So I'm a little concerned about voting on something and setting it in stone without knowing how things are going to go or how quickly we're going to be able to get back face to face. Um, I feel like, and, and the other trustees can speak up, but I, I feel like the more fluid, um, we are, the better. Um, and the, the more flexibility that we give, um, are able to give you guys, your team, uh, the principals, the teachers, as they need to plan and see how things are going to go. To me, that's the better decision to make. And if you have to come back and Mr. Berdine has to call a special meeting and for us to, to vote on things, um, I personally would be fine with that and feel much better about it. Um, and let's see, you know, how things go with the teachers to see if the 30 minutes is needed and and if it is, then, um, then make that recommendation and let, and let's talk about it at that time. So.
Thank you, Mrs. Tossan. Uh, Mr. Rosenthal, do you have a comment?
Yes, um, I would, I would actually agree with that. And also, um, I, I think we can be a little more flexible at this point. Um, this was, um, and similar to an email I received from one of our teachers, Charles, about a month ago that I had sent you. And I, from what I remember, the gist of it was, you know, why, why send something up now for October when, when it's not even, you know, the end of July yet. And, and obviously we've, we've seen how, how the situation on the ground is changing. So, um, I, I would recommend that we kind of hold off on that. The other thing I would like to see, uh, you, in, in the calendar presentation, you had, you had put, uh, a study, um, showing, um, declines in, uh, you know, from, from time off and, and, and summer. And it's, it's one study based on Katrina. And I, I would like to think there's other, you know, information out there. I would really like to see some of that. And also is, as we talked on the phone today about this, if, if you could come up and, you know, the next time that, when, when we are ready to do this, you know, assuming that we are, if you could just put some more examples in there about how, how those extra minutes, how the additional minutes, uh, would be spent, um, as you and I discussed, because I was kind of confused on that. So. Um, but yeah, I'd, I'd be very supportive of, of, um, postponing this at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. James.
Thank you. So, uh, yeah, I, I, I would agree. I guess that, um, you know, it's the, we, we want to, I don't want anybody to misinterpret this though, as that we don't care about catching students up or getting or providing the remediation they need or helping them with their learning that they may have lost in the last term. So I do care very much about those things, but I also don't want to create a situation where we're frustrated or staff is frustrated or we're risking health and safety because of feeling like we need to be back to school based on this calendar or the schedule. So I, I, I think it's, it seems, I, I would agree with Mrs. Tossan. If we need to have a special meeting, if something becomes clear and the path forward becomes clear, then let's have that special meeting and vote on that, on a calendar. But, but let's make sure, um, we don't have to change it multiple times. That just makes the communications effort more difficult. It makes, it becomes confusing which version of the calendar are we on? All of those, I think, things become an issue. I'd also like to also comment on the length of the day. Because we heard from the public comment about the length of the day being a burden for the teachers in terms of their contract and that, that the minutes and, and all. But I also heard Mrs. Tossan say earlier about the length of the day for the child. Uh, and having, and I think about our transition not only back to school after having not been in school since the beginning of March. Um, but then with all the new protocols and all the new things to learn. So I do think that, that should all be given careful consideration when we, when we sort of phase back in, in whatever timeline that looks like. Because I also noticed that you have some breaks built in. And some of that was, I think you called it intercession. And, and that was, um, I think that that's good because we're, we all need the mental break. But I also don't know if the timing for those is the right time. And I, I don't think we'll know that until we get started. So those would be my comments. I think it seems wisest to wait to, to, uh, make sure we don't have confusion going forward.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mrs. Drew.
So I, I too, um, think that at this point, um, that it's a good time to take a pause and not move forward with any decisions on the calendar as of yet. Um, actually being on the calendar committee and working with the calendar committee, I've been a little bit spoiled in how quickly you guys can come to a general consensus, how much detail you put behind the things that you put forth. So I want to applaud you on that. And in some ways, being so good at what you do, I think that when, when we have a little bit more information, that we'll really be able to make decisions that are best for our students and our staff. And to add to that as well, you know, I think that, um, that you guys, some of the things that they're talking about with the uh, decision to extend the day really once put in context will really, um, be helpful as well. And I think that we're just kind of in a different world than when we were, uh, two weeks ago, when we were meeting and discussing all of this. And I do know that everybody that works on those committees, really, uh, they come with their A game and they put a lot of thought and effort into the calendar. And so I want to at least say I applaud you all. And, you know, I'm willing to give this another go if you guys are.
Thank you, Mrs. Drew. We appreciate your, uh, your hard work on the calendar committee and all of those involved with the calendar, calendar committee. It's probably the most dynamic, um, the calendar, calendar committee has, uh, dynamic decisions they've ever had to made, make that I can ever remember that I've been a part of the organization. So thank you for that. Dr. Dupree, do you need any more, um, information or?
No, sir. I think we're in a, we're a good place. We'll just table that and we'll go back and do some work and communicate to staff and the committee kind of, um, the conversation the board had tonight. And then we'll, we'll, we'll determine if the appropriate time, um, when to bring something back.
Thank you, sir. Well, with that being said, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
The, this meeting is now adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.